I've never to do that.
Yeah.
It was.
Let's say.
Home.
There's like.
I'm.
But it sounds like.
Oh, no.
Big one.
He volunteered.
Yeah.
I understand.
They talk.
Then.
Do all that.
Why is it dead?
That's.
And so.
And he was.
A lot of the.
Balls.
There's a lot.
But he was.
Yeah, I saw in part.
And then.
I don't think.
I don't think.
They were.
He was.
You see.
They're.
I.
I would take.
Now they're for.
It was really.
Yeah.
They did a huge.
Yeah.
For more.
And so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
They.
Let us have a.
We.
There's.
Why you got some of these.
People aren't.
Anything.
Thanks for getting.
The fun kind of.
I need.
Yes.
But.
We're.
But.
Which.
Well, you guys.
I expect.
But.
It's like.
It's essentially.
It may shed.
But it's.
By twenty four now.
It is.
It's.
It.
Be thirty.
Just.
I think.
Of course.
I know.
I know.
Part.
Well, I just go with.
The default.
I made it up.
With Johnson.
Development.
That means.
Your.
Yes.
It's very.
Probably not interface.
So we're getting.
Very.
Cold.
And it's just.
It's.
But they.
The.
This are right there next.
Easy.
So I get your.
Kind of.
Well, we're starting to sign.
You're.
Just.
It's.
Probably high.
This.
People.
Pass.
There's.
So.
Well.
Proceed.
In the biggest game.
Read.
The.
Very.
Here's.
On.
You know.
So this.
Somebody wasn't.
May.
Versus.
Hey, I was the shit.
Because we'd surprise.
If he needs.
He's.
Doesn't.
Say.
No.
Please.
He used to be like.
People.
People.
She didn't try to do it.
It's like.
That's.
My husband.
Sure.
Are you.
I don't know.
I didn't.
Remember.
Text.
You know.
There you go.
There's.
Time.
Where.
And.
We say.
Yeah.
Well, we.
I also.
Also.
You.
Don't.
The hard part.
With.
They.
Or.
Sorry.
Sanders.
Well, that's.
Governor.
I love.
The.
Being.
As.
That.
Being.
Considered.
Threat.
That's.
The.
Water.
If.
Well, maybe.
That takes a lot of.
Sign.
Here.
All done.
To.
This week.
And.
You.
You.
And.
Now.
Just.
What.
Works.
Then.
Move.
There.
Thank you.
I'm ready.
We got.
Our.
Sites.
We're.
We want something.
I'm taking.
Two.
Ages.
Two.
Down.
Or three.
Uh.
Okay.
Big.
Now.
Yeah.
For present.
Keep.
But.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe that's a.
Or.
You could make.
Yeah.
That's.
You.
I can say.
That.
Yeah.
And.
We.
Probably.
Share.
Actually.
You'll.
That.
Well.
Yeah.
I mean.
Seventeen.
You know.
No. Our. Jummys.
That's.
It's.
Always.
All.
So.
Good.
The.
Yeah.
Reasons.
Sign. Nine. Bang. Was. War.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Well, that's even.
One.
Yeah.
Oh.
Press.
And.
Very.
I was.
Hey.
But it's.
Feeling.
My.
Little.
I.
Nice.
It's.
Got.
House.
Most.
Pretty.
Oh.
Yeah.
Definitely.
I hate.
You know.
See.
I don't.
See.
You.
Yes.
Pretty.
Sure.
But.
That's.
Yeah.
We're.
Again.
Try.
Then.
See.
It's.
Starting.
To.
And.
They.
Why.
So.
At least.
They.
Say.
You.
Show.
There.
It's.
She.
You're.
She.
The.
This.
We.
Respond.
Last.
Summer. He's. The. Station. Was. Respond. Yeah. Y'all. Should. Be. Right. I. Yeah. It's.
Basically.
I just.
Go down.
From.
I'm scared.
Or.
They're not.
In.
Us.
Superman.
Is going to.
Take.
We.
Count.
Off.
Maybe.
Some.
Place.
Yeah.
Little.
Yeah.
Like.
Standard.
Have.
The.
The.
If.
I don't.
I don't.
Think.
You know.
They're.
I.
Here.
I went down.
I'm.
Nice.
It's.
Good.
I.
Friday.
And.
Saturday.
Water.
So.
In.
And. Something.
Also.
There's.
A year.
We.
They. Actually. They. Do. It. Spread. It's. That's. Of course. Same. With. This. Yeah. So. I see. Yes. But. You. And. So. Yeah. Of course. I say. Same. Basically. I.
Are you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
If you enjoy. Next. Time.
Yeah.
Serena's at the church.
With.
That's.
Quick.
Thanks.
For the building.
I was.
Having.
Right.
He's.
Longer.
Our.
Building.
Meeting.
Today.
So.
The.
There was. There was. A. Question.
It's.
About.
I was.
Really.
Just gone. Per. Holy.
Have.
You didn't know that either. You were. Going. So the building. Meeting. Today. For. Church. Or. The.
But you.
Hope.
You.
I'm. You.
Once.
And.
Walking.
No.
And.
You were.
Generally.
About sixty.
Five.
Is.
A.
So.
It's.
It's not.
More.
Like.
Now.
That's.
It's.
You started.
You.
Oh.
Hold.
That.
You.
And. Some. You. And. The. One. So. That. We're. Okay. So. We're. And. I'm. All. Right. So. And. Help. Just. A little. Reason. I was. So. I'm. So. That's. Special.
So.
I'm.
Very.
Pointing.
How.
They.
Sales.
Yeah.
You.
Right.
Still.
And.
Called.
The.
Two.
Same.
Run.
You.
And.
We.
Really.
I.
All.
Guys.
Try.
That.
Out.
And see.
How.
It's.
Smart.
It's.
So.
If.
We.
Actually.
Although.
If.
You ever.
Come.
Seriously.
Exactly.
Yes.
That's.
True.
Yeah. Correct.
Just.
That.
That's.
That's.
Can hear.
So.
Or.
I go.
That's.
Another.
Mention.
The water.
You.
Have.
The.
Pressure.
I had to do.
Water.
So.
Yeah. 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 That's. Yes.
Water.
Yeah.
My.
So.
Yeah.
I'm.
See. Yeah. I'm. Good. I. Sorry. I'm. Same. Yeah. I did. See.
Why.
Here.
We.
Go.
Yeah. I just. Yeah. Sorry. And. We. Probably. Want. Show. You. Clear. And. Someone said. Yes. So. So. Yeah. Pretty. Much. But. I. There. Was. Me. That's. I just. I'm. Just. I. See. Me. Always. That. Just. A little. Thing.
Say.
You're. Going. To. I think. You're. Going. To. This. Skill. So. She's. My. Best. Yeah.
There's.
Some.
I'm.
Sure.
But. I'll. Probably. Take. From. His. Brice. So. That's. One. Three. So. Really. Just. Like. I see. We're. Like. Viking. Oh. So. I. You. For. Change. There. Was. It's. Good. Post. I. It's. 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 Probably. They're. They're. That. It's like. Never. Happened. Right. Not. Well. It's. Only. We. That. See. What. I. Don't. From. Test. Did. I. Don't. Wish. Having.
And.
They got.
That.
Pizza.
Being.
Family.
Basically.
Because.
We.
It's.
Very.
Yeah.
I'm sure. When. We. Well. They. Say. I'm. Sure. We. So. It's. It's. Has. Something. To. I. 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 The. Chair. Like. That. I think. So. Yeah. But. It's. Pretty. I. Know. It's. Something. That. They. First. I'm. Guys. You. Have. Some. You. You're. Not. Yes. Yeah. You're. On. There. Guard. I'm. Not. Sure. Wow. And. That's. Really. Part. Plus. The. She. Yeah.
All right. The time is six P M. I will call to order the May twenty seventh meeting of the Huxley City Council. Roll call, please.
Murphy.
Here.
Mulder.
Present.
Rigler.
On the John Deere, why did we go to diesel?
Uh, we, all of our uh, mowers that we um, use in the city is diesel.
Diesel.
Um, one just for longevity of the, the engine.
Okay, okay. We've, I've dealt with uh, both uh, the um, I'm sorry, the John Deere and X mark. X marks are really nice too, but a lot of maintenance on them and stuff, so I just wasn't familiar with the diesel.
Yep.
That's what my.
So we, we currently have a John Deere diesel now, and we've had really, really good luck compared to the other one that we, the bad boy that we have.
Yeah.
Um, we're really, it's nickel and diamond us big time, so um, that'll be the one that we sell as the bad boy and we'll keep the, the John Deere.
How's your maintenance on the diesel? Cause like, I um, I know they're quite a bit more.
Um, you're, you're looking at another, another filter, um, a fuel filter, basically. Um, you're using fifteen forty, which everything but our pickups pretty much is using that. So I mean, you're not looking much in difference.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Rigler?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Okay, item six B this evening is review and approval of hiring of ISG for design work on North Second Avenue project for the FY twenty-six CIP, need a motion.
Give you a motion.
Motion Ms. Roberts?
I'll give you a second.
Second, Mr. Mulder. Matt? Just.
Any, any questions?
Anticipating so.
Um, I was excited to see the sidewalks in there. Um, I do have a question, just so it's sixty-nine to second, but there's nothing from second to main. So, I wanna take a look at that. That just leaves a weird gap for me. I don't know if that changed, you have to go back out and I don't wanna cause all that.
No, that, that's not gonna add much more to the engineering, I wouldn't think. Um, it might add a little bit of cost to the engineering, but I wouldn't think that it, they might be able to throw that in there.
Okay.
It's only a block, I mean, we're looking at.
Yeah. It's weird we got it this far, like, let's just take them.
Be both sides or just one side?
Just one side, it's that, cause there's that.
Goofy corner there that, yeah.
I don't think you could put it on the other side.
The other thing too, uh, with direction from council, um, going into the cul-de-sac. So, for second going um, from East Fifth to the cul-de-sac uh, is very narrow for right away. You get to where you're starting to go around the curve, there's a great difference in grade elevations, and in order to get ADA, you're really gonna mess with people's driveways and things like that. Um, one way we kinda thought and played around with was as it comes to the cul-de-sac, just make, um, before it goes all the way to round, it would just kinda have a crosswalk there just before the cul-de-sac um, would be one way, just so we wouldn't have to uh, possibly buy easements uh, intrude on people's driveways of screwing with the grade elevation there. Um, and the easements, that's, that's the big thing. There's only five foot of easement going into the cul-de-sac. Um, there'll be probably quite a bit of fight back from what I've heard from public going from East Fifth into the cul-de-sac with sidewalk, um, just because of the right ways, um, portion of it. And you know, it's a cul-de-sac is, are people really walking down there, that type of thing?
As part of this design, will they be offering up some solutions to that? Is that part of their?
So that, that, that was kind of one of them, was talking about just making that crosswalk there, um, just as you're entering the ball, basically. Um, and or whatever you guys um, would like direction would be how we would design it.
I guess I don't have a preference without, I mean, I can picture certainly what you're describing there, but it'd be nice if uh, if ISG could maybe put together a, you know, a couple of options for us there, I guess is how I would answer that unless council gives some different direction here.
Also with the uh, North Second going into that cul-de-sac, there is the island with the flagpole. Um, that's gonna need curb and gutter all the way around, which is quite a bit of an expense. Or we take it completely out and put seven inches of asphalt in there and make it an open area. I don't know that the neighborhood, there might be two or three that really like it. I know one gentleman that actually takes care of it and um, put the flagpole in and he mows it and everything when he mows his yard, that type of thing, so. Um, I don't know how much kickback there's gonna be on that, but also with the, the design and cost estimate moving forward. Um, cost estimate of the project, I should say, um, on whether or not we wanna keep the island or not. From the maintenance standpoint of things, it's gonna be a lot easier to plow snow without it, um, being there, but.
Yeah, that was my concern was snowplow, snowplow and snow removal would certainly seem easier without that.
Right, and also with, you know, what if that person moves that's been taking care of it, who's gonna maintain it then? That type of thing. Yep, yep.
I know my last place I lived before Huxley had an island like that, it was wonderful, we all gathered there and I, okay. But, that was, I lived in Huxley.
Yep.
One house away from it. We know, we planted it.
I, I will tell you from public works aspect, that that island is the biggest frickin headache. Uh, and so, um, I, uh, it's, it's, it's a big headache and, and, and we would spend a lot more for the
Curbing gutter.
Curving better, yes. Um, I, yeah, and, and like Matt said, he, I, I praise this guy for doing this, but if he, if he moves out in five years, ten years, then what are we gonna do? It's gonna be a city problem.
What, another thing to also think about with that is, you know, okay, we do get rid of the island, is, is there potential that we could offer the cost of being able to relocate that flagpole maybe into his yard since he paid for it, that type of thing? Um, that's gonna be some questions that's gonna be asked from them.
Those neighbors love that island, that flagpole, I'm not willing to, you know, go forward and say, take this down.
So we, I think we planned on having a public hearing, um, to get input for sidewalks, that kinda thing, and a, answering questions like we have in the past with doing, going forward with the project and what the project's gonna entail with the water main and that kinda stuff, so.
You know, one thing that might impact that is, uh, you talked about the sidewalks and the difficulty of getting around the bulb um, of the cul-de-sac, if those sidewalks uh, led to that center island. So, you're not crossing across the street, but you're, you know, you know, I'm trying to describe there.
Yep, yeah, we kinda discussed that a little bit too though.
Any further comments, Mr. Etcher?
Is there, is there any way we could small? That area too, yeah. So, cause you, cause the way, way you guys are teardropping it, right? For yours, plowing?
Yeah, yeah.
There's, there's a way we could make it a lot smaller. And then he could have his flagpole and, and even if he moved, uh, the city could maintain that with no problem.
Yeah. There might be an option that they're willing to compromise with as well.
All good suggestions, I appreciate that, and uh, yeah, see where it goes from there. Hearing no other questions, I've got a motion and a second on this item, roll call please.
Etcher?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, item six C this evening is a motion to approve ordinance number five four three. It's an ordinance amending the city code of Huxley by adding a new section authorizing use of state income set off program. Uh, this is the second reading. Do I have a motion on that?
Give you a motion.
Motion by Ms. Roberts?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mulder. Uh, we'll get through this and then we'll waive for the other. Any comments or discussion on this second reading? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mulder?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
And Rigler?
Yes.
Very much. Uh, that was the second reading. We do have the opportunity to waive the third reading. This will take a four fifths vote of council. Uh, it asks for a motion to waive the third reading.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Etcher? Second, Mr. Mulder. You need a roll call on this and then a roll call on the third.
Yes.
Roll call please.
Um, Murphy?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
We're completed on that item then? We're good?
We have to.
Now we need it, okay. Now we need a motion to approve the third reading.
I'll offer a motion.
Motion, Mr. Rigler?
Be a second.
Second, Ms. Roberts. Roll call please.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Just kidding, no, no, I'm kidding, yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Okay, need a motion to approve ordinance number five four four. It's an ordinance amending the code of Huxley uh, regarding parking regulations. Um, for the sake of those in attendance, this is not related to the truck and trailer parking that we'll talk about later. This is cleaning up some other items, so. Any motion on this?
I'll offer a motion.
Motion, Mr. Rigler?
Second.
Second, Mr. Etcher? Davion, give us a brief overview on this, or is that Nate?
Sure. Um, to recall, this will um, restrict vehicles uh, from parking on city streets that um, do not have a current registration or a current uh, vehicle license plate attached to it. And it does restrict um, dealers' plates because those are only valid for certain things and not so much for parking. Um, and I will point out that Erin pointed it out last time, it didn't get changed, I noticed again, but that should be chapter sixty-nine, not fifty-five, so the signed version will have to be corrected.
It should be sixty-nine or it should be fifty-five?
Should be six, it, it should, this is in chapter sixty-nine, and I think Erin said that whoever helped put this together pulled it from another city code and she didn't catch the sixty-nine last time and it said fifty-five, so it is in chapter. It should be, it is a chapter sixty-nine parking regs, so it'll be sixty-nine point one-three instead of fifty-five point one-three.
Okay, any further questions? If not, we will amend that to read chapter fifty-five and I would ask for a roll call please.
Etcher?
Yes.
Uh, Mulder?
Yes.
Roberts?
Point of order.
Please.
It is not chapter fifty-five, it's chapter sixty-nine, that's what it shows on.
It does show sixty-nine on here, that's why I was asking earlier.
Did you?
It shows sixty-nine on the agenda, but fifty-five.
If, if, if you look in the packet on, on the actual ordinance, under the now therefore be ordained, it was listed as fifty-five point one-three and uh, Erin pointed out last meeting, it should have been sixty-nine, she didn't catch it and we didn't catch it. So that's what, it, it is chapter sixty-nine.
Okay, just making sure we all know. Thanks. Uh, yes, if it was at me. Rigler?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, that was the second reading. Um, again, we can waive the third reading with a four fifths vote. Do I have a motion to waive the third reading?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Etcher?
Hold on for a second.
Second, Mr. Rigler? Roll call please.
Rigler?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the third reading?
I'll give you a motion.
Motion, Mr. Mulder?
Second.
Second, Mr. Etcher? Comments? Roll call please.
Mulder?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, need a motion to approve change order number one for the splash pad project.
Make a motion.
Motion, Ms. Roberts?
Second.
Second, Mr. Etcher? Forrest?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, Forrest Aldrich, it means strength him. So, uh, splash pad is ahead of schedule, like I reported at the last council meeting, still ahead of schedule. Looking at having that done uh, sometime after the fourth of July, able to move the equipment delivery up. So that's all good news. Um, this change order is to put a clear sealer instead of a white pigmented sealer on the splash pad itself. Just, it's an appearance thing with a white on the splash pad, it could wear kinda different, or if we use a clear uh, be a better appearance, and this is just the materials cost difference between the, the two products. So we'd recommend approval. Uh, there's money in the budget for three hundred ninety-four dollars.
Yeah, fair enough. Any questions? Hearing none. Uh, I've got a motion and a second, roll call please.
Rigler?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Department, uh, Council and mayoral reports, um, department reports were emailed out to council. I trust you did receive those. Are there any additional department reports this evening? Not seen anybody rise. Forrest, nothing? City count, uh, city attorney? Nothing? Thanks, sir. Barb?
Just a reminder that the Iowa League Conference is gonna be held September seventeenth through nineteenth in Des Moines. If you could let me know by next Monday, if you'll be attending, uh, registrations will open up next week and we will get you registered. September seventeenth through nineteenth.
Barb, Dave?
I don't have anything this evening.
Mr. Murphy?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Mulder?
Nothing, thanks.
Ms. Roberts?
Oh, thank you.
Stretcher?
No.
I have nothing as well, so that will conclude our regular business meeting for this evening. Uh, as I indicated earlier, we do have a work session planned for this evening. Uh, those wishing to speak to any work session items, I'll give you the opportunity before each individual item, so. Uh, the first item this evening uh, in the work session is uh, regarding chapter sixty-nine point zero nine, which is truck parking, uh, I think that includes trailers as well, so. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item this evening? Please, just ask you, come to the podium and start with your, uh, your name and address, please, and then limit your comments to five minutes. And I'm sorry, was it five, five minute?
Okay, so my name's Lance Flathers, I'm at five twelve West Centennial Drive here in Huxley. Um, so regarding this, just more or less wanted to understand a little bit more about what's driving it. And then also just explain, you know, there's not a whole lot of us here, but kinda what, what it does to some of us that don't have access to, you know, parking other means for our camper's trailers. Um, so one, I just wanted to ask, uh, you know, have there been specific complaints that have been driving this in different areas or?
So I'll kinda go off on that. Yes, we've had uh, complaints in certain parts of the community for this. Now, with that being said, um, I met with the city manager and the police chief and um, addressed it as a complaint basis.
Sure.
Okay, um, the, the chief at that time thought we should be enforcing it community-wide, whether we get complaints or not. Um, I did talk to the city attorney after that meeting, um, and the city attorney was also fine with complaint basis citations. Dave has also talked to the city attorney and Dave can address that also, so. It is, it is an issue, and, and it is an issue throughout the community, uh, cause I have talked to other people other than this area that we were talking about, um, that had problems with their neighbors parking, um, a trailer. If they had a business, parking it daily, com- across the street, causing parking problems, pulling out of their drive and so forth. So if it's, if it's a complaint basis, I think we need to address it.
Sure.
Um, and if it's not a complaint basis, uh, if the officers aren't seeing a problem, then we should look at it that way.
Sure, yep, and the, and the reason I bring it up is, so, you know, for those of us that have campers, RVs, boats, you know, we work through the, through the full week. My case, I, I drag race, so I have a trailer that soar elsewhere. But it takes me two, three hours to load up in the evenings, and we're usually traveling six, seven hours away every weekend, so. For me, you know, it's one of those things where park off the main artery, you know, park in an area where there's not a whole lot of traffic. And typically, we'll load up, leave it there overnight, and we're leaving in the morning, so. That's what I just wanna bring up, just make sure we're looking at all that stuff. Um, I completely understand the safety aspect of it. Um, understand, you know, main artery roadways, not wanting to plug that stuff up, but just wanted to speak out. Um, as are several people that I know specifically that, you know, have weekend family gathering type of stuff that are away from home that require this type of stuff, and just wanna make sure that we're addressing that.
So are you on the cul-de-sac, is that what?
No, nope, I'm on West Centennial, on the corner of West Centennial and Ballard.
Okay, alright.
So.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And that's, and that's.
Cause I know the cul-de-sac was an issue also, uh, and cul-de-sac parking, um, fire is, is a problem. Now, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, so if we have one vehicle parking there, it's not a problem. But if we have several vehicles parking there, so that's why the ordinance is there. Uh, if, we can't stipulate whether one vehicle's gonna be parked there illegally or four vehicles parked there. In a four vehicles are parked there, a fire apparatus is not able to make that turn. So, tha- that's on a different topic.
Yep.
But, but what I'm saying is, um, my feelings on it is, it should be enforced by complaint basis.
Sure.
So, alright.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments this evening. Anybody else from the public wishing to be heard on this? Please, Travis. Uh, name and address, please.
Uh, Travis, Woodback eleven oh five Centennial Circle. Um, I'm kinda in the same boat, race, race trailer, motorhome, um. This last weekend, actually, we parked in an area the same as, as Lance Open Road, there's nothing else there, you know, so. As long as that's in for, and we parked it there at ten o'clock at night and had it gone by eight o'clock in the morning, you know, so it's not like we're sitting there for a week at a time. I guess that's my concern, and then the parking about the cul-de-sac, if you wanna talk about it quick, um. Like on Centennial Circle, we have an issue that there's no parking on both sides of the road. So if you can't park on either side of the road, people have small driveways and you got, we got kids drive and things like that, there's no place to park. So, we need to at least have one side or the other able to be parked on.
And, and I'm good with that, Travis, but in the actual cul-de-sac, you know as well as I do. We, we, we don't want the parking in that cul-de-sac because actually if a fire truck needs to get down there, it, it can't make the turn. I mean, I, I could see what you're saying, it's like if one car's down there, we could still make the turn. But we don't know if it's gonna be two or three vehicles down there are illegally.
Interesting thing about that is, um, at our last fire meeting, um, two fire meetings ago, I brought home a ladder truck that we worked on and I was taking it somewhere else. And uh, we had people parked on one side of the road on Centennial. Uh, on this side of the cul-de-sac, this side of the cul-de-sac, and I was able to make it around with a ladder truck in one turn. So it, it's, it's bigger than you think.
But, but in the cul-de-sac?
At the cul-de-sac, yeah. Yeah, they're parked like this, right, on the inlet and outlet, and you're able to turn around. So, that's, that's an argument I have, I guess. So, yeah.
Appreciate your comments, Travis. Anybody else from the public, uh, wishing to be heard on this? Thanks, sir. Uh, name and address to start.
Gentlemen, five nineteen East Third. Um, I'm a contractor, so I have a job trailer. I don't bring it home all the time, but I just wanna ask a question that you guys think about before you do the complaint base thing. What do you do after, say I'm a contractor and my neighbor just doesn't like my trailer? Like after the complaint base, what's my options?
So, so I would say, you get a warning.
Okay.
Okay, after that, it, it is an ordinance.
Legally, not blocking any traffic.
So, it is an ordinance that you cannot have that there, so you're gonna get a citation.
Okay, so that's.
Plain and simple, and it's like, um.
They just don't wanna contractors, or the only one that owns a trailer ever to live in Huxley.
You also need to respect your neighbors.
Okay, yeah, I get that, but they also gotta respect, I'm trying to survive and pay my taxes.
Right, but they, they don't have to, they, yeah.
I mean, I don't have to live in Huxley, but I'm just saying, I, I like it here.
I agree with you totally.
So there's no, nothing we could do?
It is an ordinance.
What if we, what do we do to change this ordinance? It's just a thought.
I don't, I don't believe we need to change the ordinance. There is some.
Sounds like you're the only one that has a problem with this.
No. I don't know, we'll see.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and I appreciate your comments and I'm not cutting you off, and you can certainly continue to speak. Uh, this is a work session item because it's an issue and the council's looking to give some direction to staff. What would be very helpful, um, is if somebody had some great ideas as to how to address this.
Yeah.
You know, as is indicated, there's some certain areas of town where it's more problematic, but you can't just target certain areas, so. What would it, what's an ordinance that would work for, maybe those thoughts?
I get that, I'm just, I wanna provide for my family, and if we can't park my trailer, it just doesn't make sense to live here and I don't wanna have to move, but if I have to do.
So, so what is your suggestion?
I talked to some of the cops and we talked, and they mentioned some twenty-four hour rules. You know, it's not like I ever leave my trailer unhooked. I, I leave it unhooked to go to the hardware store maybe, but then I hook it right back up and, and I'm out, but. Twenty-four hour rule, hard to enforce, forty-eight hour rule also hard to enforce, truck and wheels, it just takes their time, you know, so I don't know uh, what the right answer is, maybe like a permit process for people that own businesses? And then it's like a three-strike per year deal, you know, just a thought, just something off my head, then you can regulate who has trailers for businesses, at least, I don't know, it was just a thought. So, I'd be willing to pay a hundred, hundred fifty dollars for a parking permit for the year.
But what I'm asking though is, if you're parking your trailer, I understand you have a business. But if you're parking your trailer across the street from somebody's drive.
Uh, most of the time, I'm just blocking my driveway because there's no freaking parking in Huxley. So most of the time, my truck's parked where a car would be parked, and then my trailer's in front of my driveway, which hurts nobody.
So it's, it's not a jam?
To be right in front of my house. That's the only parking on my.
Are your neighbors complaining about?
No, no, that's why.
So, a- again, it's like, if we're, if we're enforcing on a complaint basis, you're not a problem then, right?
Not yet. That's until one of my neighbors moves and then, that's, that's what my, my problem is. Cause I don't, I can't control where, who moves and what, if we get one person that complains.
But then again, we need to address people's complaints.
Sure, and. But what about my complaints? Just saying, I mean, I have, I pay taxes here too, so.
I, I realize that, I don't know, we talk part of the time, so I don't know how that counts towards this time. Um, yeah, some of the neighboring communities, and I guess with some of the feedback I heard from local business owners. I transparently, Rory, I don't love the complaint basis because I feel like it's not black and white, and that's the, the number one complaint we get from council is that there's too much gray area. So I'd like it to just be consistent, but uh, you had mentioned overnight, and I saw in our packet, there were several suggestions there. I guess that, that's something I'd like to explore as a council is, what are appropriate hours? I also work in agriculture, so I admittedly carry that bias, that I don't pull trailers anymore. But there used to be times if I was going north or something, I would bring something home in the evening, park, leave north, so I didn't have to drive back and forth, but. Um, yeah, it sounds like maybe that would work for a local business owner like.
Yeah, just maybe you do a permit or something, I don't know, overnight, I don't. Something for you guys gotta think about, because you gotta think about the people that complain and the people that live here and wanna work here. Cause I wanna work in Huxley, but if I, if you guys are in the cops, which they don't really wanna enforce the rule, by the way, but if they have to enforce the rule and start taking me, I don't have time out of my day to come fight the stupid ticket, cause I was working on my house. So, just something to keep in mind, I guess.
Okay, no, appreciate your comments this evening.
Yep, so if we force, enforce on a twenty-four hour rule, there are stipulations to that, there are problems with that. I'm just letting you know.
Before I get to Nate, anybody else from the public wishing to be heard on this? Please, Nate?
Thanks. Um, obviously, uh, me and my officer's been talking on this a lot, and we have had complaint basis in the past, and we don't like it, not one bit. We've noticed an overwhelming number of complaints or overwhelming enthusiasm marked towards one particular family. Whereas it seems like, uh, all the other ones are big ignored, when the violations are similar or the same, and they're an eyeshot of this same thing. Now, I've been trying to work with some neighborhood people and some council and David, of course, and uh, we like it best when we do it ourselves. Um, the reason why is that neighbors don't have to feel like they have to call us and put their name on what they're complaining about. Now, let's just take, for example, somebody that lives on East Fifth Street, and they have a neighbor that parks a trailer, of course, it's against the code as the code reads. But they don't have the number to me or a council member, or they don't care to call dispatch where their information is recorded and they are no longer anonymous. They just don't have the stomach for it. Now, is that fair for them? Probably not, right? Um, is it fair for my officers to ignore something on one side of the street? Um, is it fair for my officers to ignore something on one side of the street just because purely this family might be more popular than another family? That's not fair. That's selective law enforcement and that's hypocritical. So my guys, w- will not go for just a complaint based. To complain, it has to be us. Alright, now if a complaint comes in, of course we go to it and we address it. And that is fine. They can remain anonymous that way. It's because we were, uh, our attention was given to that area. And then we will make the case. That's where my guys are at. Um, I'm happy to field any questions right now, but that is. They feel very strongly about this. Now, it's not because, and I understand sir, I, you know, we're not trying to pick on anybody in particular. We just want to be as fair as we can. Um, that's all there is to it. And I, I sympathize with your situations there. So either all or none is the way officers want to do it. And me too.
I've got a question for you real quick. If we turn it over to you to do.
Yeah.
You're just driving along, are you only going to stop and talk to people if it looks like a problem? Or is it just any trailer you see, you'll stop and talk to?
Whatever the council guides. Now, we used to for about twenty years now, the, the common practice that we've been dealing with is if it's attached to a truck, we let it go. That was the practice that we did, even though it doesn't, not, it's not how the code is interpreted or read. That was just our practice. Um, the idea was behind it was that trailer could be easily moved because it's still attached. And we, any unattached trailer, we went ahead and ticketed. So that's what we did do. I wouldn't be opposed to that. My, nor would my, any of my guys. We also wouldn't be opposed to ticketing every single trailer in town. And we also wouldn't be opposed to ignoring every single trailer in town. What we really demand is that it is.
Consistency.
Citywide.
Yeah.
Period. So whatever you guys want, we'll do it. Happily, starting now.
Well, I, I just don't want to be known as a city that's against everything.
Correct.
I mean, at some point, there's this thing called tolerance and we all got to just suck it up because there's things in life we like and there's things in life we don't.
There's also a feeling where we feel like we're stewards of a small town mentality. Um, whereas, you know, if Huxley's going, maybe we're getting away from that or maybe we stick. It's up to you guys and we're game for whatever you guys want to do.
I was moving my son home from college the other day and I brought one of my three trailers that I owned home to, uh. To, uh, leave at five AM the next morning to go move him home and. I wasn't sure as I drove past the car that was parked next to the don't park here sign. As I pulled into my cul-de-sac, if I should leave it on the street or if I should block my driveway because the length of the trailer, uh, blocked the sidewalk. Too. I wasn't sure which one of the codes I should do, but I knew I wasn't going to drive an hour. South to pick up my trailer to leave at five thirty in the morning to go the other direction. So. I, you know, I. I also drove around town a little bit tonight for about twenty minutes and I drove around and I saw a lot of trailers, uh, parked in. Lawns and on the grass and I don't know if I like that. I just don't know if that looks the best. Also, we have a very nice town. It's very clean. It's very. It's a good looking town and I, I just don't know if I like the, the trailers parked on lawns if that might be the. Alternate, right? Let's just back that sucker up in our front yard or our side yard and leave it there and I. That just makes my stomach crawl too, so.
Well, from a neighbor, I'd be more irritated if somebody parked it inside yard than if they were out in the street.
So, you know, it's, it's a real tough one here. I think we've done a great job, uh, you know, I've never really heard many complaints. It's over the twenty some years I've lived in town. I, I've seen one or two situations where I'm like, ah, should that be there? Or if it's unattached and it's like hard to see overnight, that's really.
Yeah, those are good ticketed.
Those are the ones that concern me the most.
Mm-hmm.
Um, parking across the street from a driveway, yeah, it sucks, but you could park a truck or a. Car or a van across the street as well. And still a pain to get in, out of your driveway. So I really. Liked what we've done for the last twenty years and I kind of. Complaint driven, or if you see something that's like, hey, that's not safe. That, that's kind of where I land with it, but just. So I parked across my sidewalk, not in the street, so.
We all survived.
Alright.
I guess I'm kind of, I'd like the permit idea. I hadn't thought of that, um. But I also liked if it's, so I'm thinking long weekend, right? People come home with their boats. They want to park it overnight and then they want to get out in the morning and go and I don't see a problem with that. I don't think we should make it a problem. I think there's a gentleman on my street that has a big truck and it might be overweight now. So he's been putting in his driveway, I noticed, and I don't know that he should have to do that. He's not blocking anything where he was, so. I don't like the complaint because it's not fair for you guys to have to figure that out, but I would like to see something, maybe it's. So then I'm like, well, is it seventy-two hours in for a holiday weekend? Where, where does it, where do you go?
Do you allow overnights?
And each overnight is fine. As long as you're hooked up, yeah. I'm not opposed to that.
Like I said, if my officers are ready and willing to do anything, it's just, we want, the only demand we have, the only. Is that it's citywide, period. And not complaint driven.
For a point of clarification, I, I think you said the way it's been being enforced has been, if it's been hooked up. And I think the way it's written currently, we have some of the weight restriction issues where we pointed out, what is it, half ton or three-quarter ton pickups?
One ton, which is not. Much of a pickup.
So I, I do think we're gonna. I can't speak for the five of us, but I would think even just for the truck, there's some amendment in order, just to clarify the. You know, what vehicles can be parked on the road, but. I like the idea of. If that's how we've been doing it for what, twenty odd years and it's worked.
Been at least oh six when I got here. And oh five when Joe got here, that's our memory. And before then, I guess we can't speak to it.
I don't know, Lee, I, I apologize. I, I can't recall your name, uh, who's sitting Alex, who's sitting in for Aaron. I don't know legally how you write up if it's hooked to a truck, like that would be the layman man's terms for it, but. If there's terminology to reflect how we've currently been enforcing it, and yeah, if we can make it black and white, so the whole. Whole city is treated the same. I don't want to limit, well, actually I live down the street from you, like. You, it's never been an issue when I've seen trailers out like that, so. I don't want to limit that or someone, yeah, bringing a camper home for the weekend that. That doesn't feel like Huxley or the community I moved into and the community I bought a house to stay in, so. Yeah, if there's a way that we can draft language to reflect how we've been enforcing it, that's my suggestion.
I'd say there would be a way for us to do that, which we need some direction from council and staff from chief and, um. His experience with, with dealing with this kind of thing. Um, but I think you guys have identified, it just has to be something that's going to be universal for the whole city. We're not going to identify, you know, one street where we're going to have it and one street where we're not. You know, it needs to be something that's going to be easy for the chief and his officers to enforce. Um, and easy for your citizens to understand.
I, I have a question on the one street thing because I think Nevada, somebody has one. I wouldn't want it on any main arteries, right, though? So you could identify it that way.
Okay, if I ask this gentleman question.
I have a question if I had to ask.
Um, my question for you would be, uh, if it was allowed overnight, would that?
Yep, that would help. I mean. I'm a contractor, so I always, my honey-do list, I always, my wife wants to fix shit all the time, so. My question was what constitutes active construction site? Cause a lot of shit that you do on a house, sorry, it's word my language, a lot of stuff you do on your house doesn't require a permit. Now, that's another. With the way the notice written.
For the way I'd say it, and same with landscaping or something like that. Let's take for example, and. This is the way I've been playing it as far as active site. Let's just take, uh, lawn mowing, professional lawn mowing.
Exactly.
You know, that's active to me. That's an active site, so.
Yeah, that would, uh, cause a lot of the time it's just like, come here and then I go to Slater, Kelly, Ames, over the weekend, you know, some. Sometimes it doesn't make sense for me. I, my office is in Nevada. I have a place to park it. It's just not. Super fiscally responsible to be, keep running back and forth, you know, because all my tools are in there, so I need those to do everything, so. So overnight would be great, but like weekends, you know, like. If I do two things on my house, is that acceptable? I, I don't know.
Long as you're working, I suppose, you know, I mean, that's.
I could be working on my house all weekend.
True.
Thank you.
Okay, so obviously there's going to be some, um. No, gray area there, so that's going to be a difficult one to say with active, but.
So if they have a business, a mowing business, he can park it there every day.
Right, that's.
No matter what the neighbors say.
That's the gray.
But the problem is.
Right, no, no, my thought was on this was, let's say you are a mowing business and you, you have a customer on Main. But you live on and you park your stuff over on Second Street. Sure, well, what I mean is, okay, let's say. I use Tru-Green Chemlon, okay? Now they're, and they. Have a mower situation where they have a trailer while they're mowing and stuff, you know, and this, this, uh, company is out of Des Moines. You know, while they're doing it, they have the trailer there, yeah, I'd let it happen. You know, they're working that, that's to be an active site that doesn't need a permit. The issue there was permitting that was being asked. So to me, that's an active working site.
You're moving in, you got a trailer there and you're hauling things in and out, that'd be an active site.
Right, right. Now, obviously there's room for abuse there, I'm sure of it, and somebody might find it, but you know, it's. Maybe that's just an officer, officer discretion thing, like, hey. You know, show me what you're working on, something like that, but. I don't know, we're getting into the gray here.
Well, I think with any rule, you're going to find somebody who finds an exception. I, I don't think you can move or do anything.
No, no, you can't. But we're gonna.
That's really what we're trying to get here. We're just trying to.
Not necessarily that, but, uh, trying to get as close to, uh. You know, across the board fairness and, uh, and clearness and consistency as we can get with whatever rule. Or interpretation or practice is asked of us. Like I said, our office, our officers, as long as lawful, we're, we're good for it. And we're happily and enthusiastically help you guys do what you want to do, but.
I'm in favor of, uh, of. What Corey said, I'm in favor of looking at, at just redoing language to. Basically do what we've been doing for the last twenty years and i- it seems to have been working. So instead of recreating a wheel, let's just go back to the wheel we had.
Okay. Um, regarding the vehicle weight, do you have a recommendation on that Nate?
Not really. I think, uh, anything that, uh. With air brakes, maybe anything that requires a class A.
Okay.
To drive, I mean, that's the best, because one thousand or one ton is.
That's nothing.
That's everybody's truck.
That's some cars.
Right, yeah, you're right.
Vehicles.
So I think, uh. Right, so maybe that could be a requirement. I don't know, how would the DOT? You know, anything that has air brakes or, you know, like obviously I don't want a bus or anything like that, or Winnebago even, you know? So you can drive a, a Winnebago, I believe, without a class A, as long as it doesn't have air brakes and some of those are, but we don't allow those. We classified those, so, so. As far as weight. I don't know.
So the concern isn't necessarily the weight or the damage that that's doing to the street. It's because it's probably a large vehicle.
Right.
And that's what we're trying to address.
So in that, in that, uh, in code sixty-nine oh nine, it does say, you know. Winnebagos or, or, uh, you know, campers, things of that sort. Semis, semi tractor trailers. You know, maybe we keep classifying more, uh, cargo box trucks, delivery trucks, uh, moving trucks. You know, we may have to define everything, we may have to do it. That's what, if that's our aim.
But wouldn't we really want them? They have a moving truck and be overnight if somebody's moving into town? I mean, if people moved in, they parked it overnight and get unloaded and delivered, I, I'd be mad as hell if I just moved into town, I got ticketed.
Not the best welcome, but, uh. Yeah.
Welcome back in there.
Yeah, um. Yeah, exactly. I mean, so we'd have to. Basically think about it and if whatever you want to find and off the street. Now, U-Hauls are not the problem here, you know, so I, I don't think that's something we should address, but. Our campers, RVs, could they be a problem? Sure, they could, you know?
Part of this is self-composed by councils before us and otherwise by. Building narrower streets, right? Instead of trying to do that where parking is more of a problem.
Yeah.
And get back in and out of that, we try and reduce that footprint as much as we can, reduce and preserve costs, get people where they need to go, but. It has its trade-offs. Future work sessions, we could decide to build. Bigger streets, some bigger streets, streets, gates, more parking, planned parking.
Uh, to address a, a previous comment, I, I thought you maybe had a reaction to this Nate, um. Parking a motorhome in your front lawn, is that permissible?
No, it's, uh, that's basically in the grass and that's something I've been working with, with, uh, uh, P and Z. We should have, they should have something coming back our way for that. Front yard, no. Um, trying to think that, that, that's a law that we're trying, or the code that we're trying to clear up. Now, if it's a RV camper from pull behind or a fifth wheel or whatever, yeah, you can't do it on, on the side, on your side.
Oh, beside the home.
Yeah.
But not the.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, exactly.
It implies that somebody's, I mean, right, is.
Yeah, I, hey, yeah, I understand the.
I guess I don't.
Understand your point, it's just.
The only point I can see is if it's a class A commercial truck. You don't want that parked with somebody's in front of their house.
No, 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 and that's, and that's covered under, under the code as it currently is. Yeah, well, every now and again, we have, uh, people, you know, parking their campers for. You know, more than just unloading and loading and we, we generally attack that pretty.
Well, I was saying, we have, like, we were going to load up tonight, leave at eight in the morning or something like that, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
There's got to be some sort of leeway, because otherwise we have to go to Slater bucket.
Right, right, which, yeah, which doesn't sound too fun, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a, from a security standpoint, you know, I've got a lot of investment, my tools and my.
Right.
Race car and all that stuff, that's something that I want to load. Drive somewhere that I have no eyesight of it.
Right.
Leave it sit and then have to come back because, you know, my family wants to leave right after work.
Right, right.
Also, does anyone on the council have the trailer or in plan to get a trailer and want to park it in front of their house or?
Here's why I'll pull one in this town.
Just, just to balance the direction, um, do keep this rule here, very breaking the ordinance yourself, okay?
It do clarify, I have never parked, I shouldn't, I don't. I, I park one off-site and the other one's in the backyard. I mean, they're not, um. I get your point, point taken, but, yeah. Um, all right, so you addressed, uh, front yard, uh, chief. How about, uh, parking within, uh, the right-of-way? The area between the sidewalk and the.
Right, right.
Typically grass, but you, that area.
There's only one area of town where that generally flies and that's in the old part of town, south side there, like South Third, South Fourth, one hundred block. You know, where there is no curb and gutter. Yeah, I'm sure there's an existing right-of-way, but I don't, you know, it seems like there's. I'm sorry. That's, yeah, and that's, uh, and that's generally allowed and seems to be flowing fine. Um, now someone to do that, say on Lindwood would be, yeah, that wouldn't be alright.
Can I do that or can't?
I would say no, no. No.
Different spot, maybe.
I'm sorry?
If you live in a different part of town or.
Oh, well, that's, yeah, well, there you go. Now I'm eating my own words a little bit, so. Oh. No map. Alright, so, I'm sorry? Yeah, yeah, think of that area, yeah. The older part of town or the original town. Correct, yeah.
Captain Seal loves the grass.
Exactly.
Alright, so. Uh, council, I guess I'm looking for some direction here to pass along to staff as to how you want this. Existing ordinance modified. Yeah, I, I guess I'll start there. Uh, how you would wish to see this modified? Is there any direction for, for staff at this point?
I don't want to anchor the entire convert. My suggestion was just that, just my suggestion, but, um, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, Nate, I think you said as long as it was hooked up to a vehicle.
That's the way I played it. But if it's unattached, then so is regardless if it gets called in.
So if that, I guess I'd use the general statement, how it's being in, or how it's been being enforced. And then the one thing I did like about Slaters was, uh. It opened up the weekends. They had them just for, or they had hours from Monday to Friday, which I know Tracy, you brought up, like if someone brings something home for the weekend. I personally, one of five of us, um, like the idea of people being able to bring something home for the weekend so that they. Don't spend their whole Friday evening going and fetching a vehicle or something. They, it allows them to do something recreational over the weekend, so. That's my suggestion.
I appreciate that input.
I like that, and um, if, I mean, I kinda like the permit idea, I'm thinking there's a. Person with a taco truck business in town or any kind of business like the shaved ice. Like, is that something we should, just so they're not blocking another driveway, but I'm all for the weekend parking at least. And overnight. Attached to the vehicle.
What time should we say, five P, nine A?
Oh, just uh, I, but it not on Main Street, right, not where. Not where it's not safe. I don't know if we have to exclude roads, there's some towns that exclude.
Some of the towns do have specific roads where it would be unsafe, I assume they're narrow roads or streets.
I wouldn't think sixty nine would be a good place to be parking, but.
Okay, um, well, there's uh, a little bit of uh. Momentum for that approach, uh, any other comments?
I said I'd agree with the approach that Corey had thrown out there, I think that's a good way to start looking at it.
Well, that'll require a redrafting of our ordinance, modification of our ordinance. Um, we could have that prepared for our next council meeting here in a couple of weeks. Uh, in the meantime. Uh, continue a moratorium on ticketing for this issue. I'm looking to council, I guess, but.
I was gonna actually ask that, as we had stopped doing ticketing until we sorted this out, I just assumed that would be what we did until we had it sorted out. But I'll look to direction for you.
We wanted to do prior to. A month prior, what we were doing, but still unattached will be ticketed as we used to, correct, or is it?
Hey, take the revert back to what you used to do before we.
Okay.
Made the slight adjustments until we get it ironed out.
Okay, um, it sounds like we're gonna. Do a rewrite of uh, six nine oh nine, um, are you guys, do you have any thoughts or guidance as far as the weight of these vehicles or? I mean, cause like I said, one ton is just not much.
My question is, who's gonna weigh it?
Yeah, not me, I, I don't have the equipment and, and we don't have the budgets.
You get into the nuts and bolts of, do we have the scales steered, someone's gonna pull somebody onto it?
None, we don't have the budget for it either, so.
And so my aspect, I don't think weight of vehicle, I think more going to like class or classification, semis, that kind of stuff.
Axles.
Axles maybe. But again, you gotta be a little bit nervous or careful on that, some of these trailers are triple axles.
Oh, true.
No, you just limit it to what the weight limit of the road is.
That's an idea. It's up to y'all.
Yeah, can a semi hold on most residential streets?
Yeah.
The other tack we could do is just classify these as cargo trucks, more than X amount of length. Uh, or, excuse me, yeah.
I, I think we should need to do some more studying on this before we enact, yeah, make this change. I mean, we're, we're talking about what Corey said, which is fine, uh, and then changing it to a, an ordinance. Uh, I think we should do some more studying on this and then other communities before we pass something.
I don't plan on parking in other communities, I don't mind looking at things, but. I'm more concerned about the town of Huxley than I am about any other town in the world.
Okay, until it affects you?
No, it's. It's not about me, it's about being able to get along with people.
I, I agree with you totally.
It, it's about people being able to live their lives.
I, I agree with you.
We've already got it, that most people can't park in front of their house. And now we're trying to say you can't, you can't put a trailer in front of your house, you can't have the livelihood at your house. Why don't you just tell people not to build in Huxley and, and go live elsewhere?
Has nothing to do with that, it has a respect of your neighbors. Has to do with the respect of your neighbors. Okay.
You're gonna.
Alright, we'll.
I'm not a big fan of such a way, the gentleman does.
So certainly, you know, as Mr. Etter indicated, uh, looking at some other communities is, is, is helpful, it's a starting point. The difficulty with that is. Uh, they've got an ordinance, just like we used to have an ordinance, or we do have an ordinance, how that's enforced, I think is probably, could be vastly different from what their ordinance says, um. So it's helpful, and I appreciate the information that was provided, but I don't know the reality of what's behind those, so. Um.
They could be just as dangerous as ours. And be dealing with the same, yeah, right, that, that sure, and random parts, right, so.
Okay.
But I, I do think, like, way. A vehicle, if we are going to make a change, like, we look at the ways of how other people phrase those words and classify them, I'm perfectly good with that research, I. I mean, I don't know how to define it, where it's airplane or legal.
We could go by le- by length and width.
Yeah, again, then new measuring.
Well, that, that's easier measure than weight, for sure.
I agree with you totally, sir, I agree with you totally, the weight of the vehicle should not be in there, we should be changing that ordinance, part of the ordinance. But with that being said, length and stuff, then you're gonna have problems with that too.
Yeah.
Again, I think. More research on this issue. Would be a lot. Better for the whole community than just passing something, again, not, not saying what you're saying is wrong, Corey, but. A little bit more research before we pass an ordinance.
Weight wise, length wise, just my truck, but my twenty foot cargo trailer is thirty five feet.
So when you're talking about trailers, all trailers have a gross weight. Yep, we all agree on that, so different weights on so forth, the trailers and stuff, we could get into a major issues on trailers, their size, or axles, all this stuff, and. Basically, when you wanna make a parking ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, you wanna dumb it down.
Or black and white, and dumb it down, yes, um.
So make it simple, that is gonna be good for everybody, and I think rushiness is not gonna be good for anybody. But anyway, anything you guys wanna do, I'm just one vote.
Well, and I, I think we might be closer than, than what we think, cause I, I was just suggestion, or suggesting, we enforce it the way we had been. Until there is clarity on it, and I. I guess I don't know the disparity between where it has been and what, what was being asked for, but. I know it was brought up by people, but.
I, I think the disparity has been, like, when we have one part. I'll, I'll be honest, we have one part of the town. That has major issues with this. And we have an ordinance that we're not enforcing. Because. Nate believes that we have to enforce it throughout the whole community. Again, I talked to the city attorney, Dave talked to the city attorney, and. They, the city attorney agreed with us that we can enforce by complaint. Could have solved this issue, didn't need to come to this. Did not need to come to this. But now that we're doing this, we're gonna change everything. And probably cause more problems, that's why I'm saying it's like, slow down, let's figure it out. And have the best thing for the whole in community, the whole community.
Yeah, and complaint works fine, as long as you're not somebody that's being picked on that everybody's complaining about. And if you're just somebody that people are picked off at and wanna complain. You're gonna be on the losing end of it. And that's not right either, that just because somebody's more popular than somebody else, they don't get. The same treatment, I don't, I don't agree with that.
It's usually complaint basis is somebody is committing a crime. That needs to be taken care of.
Or you live with somebody that's a neighbor that's just a chronic complaint.
Okay, I.
I mean, it can happen.
Okay, so. It sounds like we're not quite ready for an ordinance redraft yet, we'd like to see something proposed by staff.
Brian, you got some talking points, I'll start putting something together.
I think you kinda understand where we're heading there, um, bring this back to the next work session, uh, hopefully with a draft that we can kind of. Uh, dissect a little bit, um, for your reference, and you're probably well aware of this, chief, there's the. As I Google for what that's worth, the Federal Highway Administration does class the grace, uh, the gross vehicle weight ratings. So maybe it's gonna be a class three or less that's allowable, or, so that'd be a fourteen thousand pound vehicle, or something like that, if you're using a national standard. Which means nothing to me, but.
Anything that helps, I guess, will, um, you know, and then, of course, it's the direction of the council, what do you guys want on your streets, and what don't you want on your streets?
Yep.
You know, and uh. Go from there, um, one thing I'm gonna say though is, uh, you know, as mentioned, yeah, there was a crime when that complaint, but there's also a crime on Larson, when there's no complaint. We do ignore it, I don't like that idea one bit, I just don't, and neither do my guys.
Again, city attorney advises, like.
I understand, but.
So are we listening to our city attorney who we pay to, this advice, or not?
Well, it's, the situation is, it just. Okay, but I'm gonna say this, and you can, you can uh. Reject this if you want, but uh, just because we can doesn't mean we should, I'm looking for fairness. Not just because we can. I wanna be fair. That's all I wanna be. Um, like I said before, maybe there is somebody on East Fourth Street. Who doesn't have the gut or the, you know, the stomach for calling in a complaint on their.
So I will ask you this.
Yeah.
Cause. There is a parking issue on Centennial.
Yes.
By the. Um, soccer fields.
Right, yeah.
It is a very hazardous area.
Mm-hmm.
And you guys do not wanna enforce that.
Right, um.
So, and then one of your officers. Upon my complaint.
Right.
Issues a citation.
Mm-hmm.
Per council.
Correct.
Which is.
That got corrected. Um, and uh.
Those are the things for me, guys, that we can put like road, cause that one's the one I think of being dangerous, cause of the ditch.
Sure, um, I can, I can, I can speak to that if you care to, care to know, um, with that. Centennial issue, um. About one or two hours for four weeks out of the year, people, because of soccer games, park on Centennial. Where there is no parking, um, my officers feel like they're. Good stewards of this whole small town gray area, where it's like, hey, if you wanna watch your grandkid for, we're not gonna get in your way about that. And I understand that's against the law too, um. And then uh, when I got the complaint or the email from you, I let my officer know, and by then it was done, so unfortunately he only made contact with two people.
Let me ask you, do you think that's a safe area to park?
Uh, we didn't receive any complaints, I guess I didn't drive by myself.
Nate, I'm asking, do you think that's a safe area to park? Because if one kid.
Mm-hmm.
Comes out from between those cars.
Yeah.
There's nothing, there's. There's not enough room there.
Sure.
Do you think it's a safe area?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, I, I, I can't argue with any, I can't argue with anybody, it's good.
Well, here's the last thing, the city engineered this. We engineered all these people to these activities without parking. We have to shoulder some of the blame for this too, guys, alright? I'm sorry if it's some, I've said a lot of things that are.
Why we put no parking on those areas, don't blame the city engineer.
No, no, not the engineer, I'm sorry.
That's what we just did.
I'm, I'm sorry.
But, alright, with that, we're gonna move on.
Okay, I need guidance before we go, and in the meantime, before we get something, I'm not leaving here until I get clear guidance.
No, you're, you're good, that's fair, Nate, so the direction I've heard from council is to, uh, until we get this redrafted, we'll see a new draft here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, revert back to your previous, you, what you were doing two years ago, whatever that was. Um, is the ask. Uh, unless I hear some, not hearing anybody say anything different, so, is that?
Yeah, that's clear.
We're, we're clear on that, okay.
And that's citywide?
Yeah, but I don't even know what it was, but yeah, it's citywide.
It was, it was in the past, too, alright.
Okay.
Any other questions, I'm happy right now, I'm happy to answer any questions, okay?
Appreciate your input there.
Alright, let's keep this on down.
Okay, moving along, uh, the next item on the agenda is regarding fireworks. Uh, the reason, um, I asked that this be put back on the work session, uh, it was two reasons, one, council, I had discussed this previously. Uh, and at that time, there was some action, uh, in the legislature that indicated maybe there'd be some movement or some change. Uh, so council asked to delay those, uh, those conversations. Session's over for the year, and, and there was a change, um, that change does conflict with our current ordinance. Um, so I believe it's appropriate to do something with our ordinance, uh, it's not good for a city to be out of step with what the state. Allows or requires, that causes confusion, so, that's why I ask it to be put back on the work session. With that, uh, I'll give, uh, anybody from the public wishing to speak on this uh, item, uh, the opportunity to speak now. Just to ask you, start with your name and address, please, ma'am.
Let's don't have a memory, I just. Shirley Crippen, four eight five Bella Vista Court. Uh, as I understand, the legislature has changed. Or mandated that you, each city allows fireworks for the third and fourth. And December thirty first, get that, um. When we last discussed this at a council meeting, Mr. Lees was here, and he and I had a very long conversation after. Um, your meeting, and I, I was hoping he'd be here tonight, but um. Surprisingly, we were in agreement, um, with change. Based on what you choose to do, um. After hearing, I wanna say sides, but after hearing other people speak about. Their desire for family gatherings and fireworks on the weekends, I totally respect that. Um, Mr. Lees was, didn't feel that, um. Um, any change was going to impact their business, which, it's a Huxley business, we like to. Respect and support Huxley businesses, my hope is that you, with your, um. Need to follow the legislation changes for the third and fourth, that you would also consider a Saturday. Um, that we would still be at three days, if that's a possibility, um. When supporting what the government is telling us to do, so that people that wanna celebrate on the weekends can still do that. Um, but then it would also. Respect the people that we're asking you to support. Um, by cutting it back to three days versus the week.
So, just to understand your, your ask or your suggestion, uh, it would be the third or fourth? If the third or fourth are not a Saturday, would be the closest Saturday? To the third or fourth?
Whatever you guys are comfortable with, sure, yeah, the closest Saturday, yeah, one Saturday, not.
Not bookending it, okay. Okay.
Then that way, people that, as Mr. Murphy had talked about, people that have to work on the Fourth of July are still able to celebrate on the weekend. I think it's of compromise, and that's kinda what Mike and I talked about that night, is just. Compromise, that's what we need to do as, um. Citizens in the community and respecting everybody, um, recognizing that there are people that have. Um, special needs. Um, and that are, are hurt. By. Eight days of fireworks, so, um, that's our request. I wish, again, I wish he was here so he could share the conversation we had, but anyway. It's, this has been almost a year that we've been talking about this, so thank you, I appreciate your time and, and effort, and. Hope you'll support us.
I do appreciate your comments, ma'am. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak on the topic of fireworks this evening? Seeing no one rise, uh, I'm looking for some direction from council on this, um, as was indicated, the third and the fourth, um, must be allowed. Um, is there a desire to amend our current ordinance further to, uh, restrict it only to, uh. The third and fourth plus the closest Saturday or some variant thereof?
If we were gonna make that amendment, I'd really like to see, instead of just the closest Saturday, the closest weekend, you know, that would include like a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Um. You know, just Saturday itself sort of bottlenecks people into a timeframe where i- if you gave them the weekend either. You know, the weekend before, the weekend after, whichever is closest.
Appreciate those comments.
Insane that, isn't that close to what we have now? We have seven days, right, so that would be five.
Correct, it's a reduction, yeah, if you, yep.
The only concern I'd have with that. Sorry about that, the only concern I'd have is if, okay, we, we have. Fourth of July on a Wednesday, let's say. And we decide to do the following weekend as that, from an. From a standpoint of trying to control it. How are you gonna control Thursday, you know, Thursday in there? No, you can't light them off Thursday, you can Wednesday and you can Friday, but you can't Thursday, I, I think the. Being able to control that's gonna be an issue, and I'm not gonna ask. Being able to control that's gonna be an issue and I'm not gonna ask our law enforcement to go out there and try to enforce something like that because it's insanity. And, and that's where I, I look at it is how would you enforce it?
You have to remember on the third and fourth, though, there is no time limit. It states the third and the fourth. So technically by state law, people could shoot them off for forty eight hours straight.
No, we actually had clarification.
Oh, you got clarification.
We did get clarification on that because there's another section of the Iowa code that states the time. So the third, you have to allow them from nine AM to ten PM. The fourth is nine AM to eleven PM. December thirty first is nine AM to twelve thirty AM on the first of January. And just to refresh your memories, our current ordinance is in compliance with this except for the thirty first of December.
Our timeframes don't align though.
No.
That's right, because we did change the one to ten o'clock.
Yeah, the thirty.
And thirty first of December, we do not.
So we do need to modify our, regardless.
Yeah, I, looking at the days we have listed and the days that are required, um, I also pulled up a calendar trying to figure out if the fourth falls on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Essentially middle of the week. Um, I think kind of a happy compromise would be the two legal days and the adjacent weekend. In some cases it would be four days and some it would be five days, but, um, when we last talked about it. And forgive me, I, I looked it up before, but Cambridge and Slater were a compromise of the two. If I recall, because we had talked about trying to make it kind of more consistent across Ballard, um. That, yeah, I don't mind that idea. It still reduced it a couple of days and it'd be the weekend adjacent to the Fourth of July.
Corey, uh, i- if you did the adjacent weekend, um, Friday and Saturday, that's pretty logical. S- s- that Sunday evening, do you see that being necessary? And the reason I ask is Sunday evening, people are maybe getting ready for the next work week or, you know, kids, whatever that might be, but.
That's a great point of clarification. I would be fine with it not being Sunday, thinking of, yeah, going into work. I feel different than Saturday night.
Correct. Third and fourth different.
Yeah.
Than the closest Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, because the third and fourth hours are essentially dictated for us, but.
Yeah, I would be good.
Or that Sunday is done by eight PM. You know, where do you find that time, right? There's, there are some people that maybe are gone and come home with from wherever visiting people and. And want to shoot off the last server fireworks before they go to work the next day, um.
To Rory's point, if it falls on the third or fourth, though, we don't have a choice. It's the hours the state gave us.
Absolutely. That's, uh, that's, that's the hard part with setting the times and stuff like this. It's the given two days. And now we say, well, maybe the following Friday or the previous Friday or Saturday, and, and there could be a day in the middle. It's gonna make it hard for the officers to enforce this stuff. Okay, is this the day that I enforce it or not? Do I, you know, it's just.
Hey, you're almost gonna have to go the weekend up to the end of the fourth or the third to the end of the weekend. Because otherwise, how do you, how do you enforce the days in between?
And I'm sure you guys know what a calendar looks like and you can figure that out easily enough, but it's just hard to say, well, they did it till. Eleven last night, but I can go tomorrow night, I could go till ten, but tonight I can't go at all.
Right, um, is it, and I don't know if you guys have the stomach or want to burn the calories on this, because we revisit this every year since the fourth falls on every single, you know, a different day.
I was, I, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, well, my, my thought is like this, this time in particular, third is a Thursday, the fourth is a Friday. And you know, you give them the fifth, which is a Saturday. That's three days. That's the weekend adjacent. Next year, maybe it's on, I don't know what, but let's say it's on a Sunday. We can revisit it and do whatever makes sense. Maybe it makes sense to have it the first, second, you know. Um, and I know it's.
Instead of an ordinance, then you're saying more of a proclamation or more of a, a temporary from year to year instead of.
Right, and.
We did it. We amended in Atlantic, we amended our ordinance to say that the dates would be set by resolution every May. So every May, we did a resolution stating, looking at the calendar, stating the days that fireworks could be discharged.
I think if you guys box yourself into a certain. Box now, it'll might stifle problem solving later.
I guess, um, I've heard Shirley and, and appreciate you speaking out on, on your opinion, right? And, and several have come up with you. And I also appreciate Mike Leeds's opinion, even though he doesn't speak for the entire community. I've, the people I talk to and run around in the community have felt like they have no problems with what we currently have, right? So they're not coming up here to vocalize it, but they're fully supportive of what we currently have. Um, so I don't know how we decide. Is it the, the one or five people that come up? And we listen to those five opinions. Now we're gonna off to the side here, a bunch of other people saying, why the hell did you change? Heck, did you change that? Um, how, you know, that's the, that's the hard part of this job of sitting up here.
We're lucky this year, because the, the situ, the solution almost gives itself. It's on a weekend.
Yeah.
It's a fifth, you know, so.
That's where I thought the adjacent, like even if it went along the Monday, Tuesday, if you're. If I'm shooting fireworks off, I'm assuming I'm gonna be doing it the, the days close to Fourth of July.
Right, but when it falls on a Saturday, Sunday, and the fourth is a Sunday and they shoot till eleven o'clock and you gotta work the next day.
Right.
I mean, uh.
That we're bounded by the state, right?
Like, I had.
Right.
Ones where.
But then at that point, do we allow it Friday and Saturday? And then unfortunately, the state says you must do it this day.
And, yeah.
I mean, my officers would be able to, if, if you give us by May, the days and the times, that's easy enough, you know, I mean. And you're not boxing yourself in. We don't have to figure out, okay, is it the weekend before or the weekend after that they consider adjacent? We can just do.
Yeah, because if it hits on like Wednesday, what is?
Right, right.
I remember when we used to set proclamations of when beggars night was and Halloween. It was like, well, it's, they're have church nights, Wednesdays, and then Friday nights, we can't do it. And Thursday nights and this one, we just said, it's the Halloween day.
Sure.
That's it.
Which that one, you know, little bit different because it's, uh, generally done by eight.
And it's midnight.
Lot less night, lot less noisy.
So that's where I think about like trying to set it every year and it could be the whim of the people that's up here and, and they may say, we just give us ten days of.
Yeah.
Celebration.
Like I said, it's your prerogative. I just don't want you to box yourselves in and, you know, and us to have to guess. And, you know, I think we'll revisit it every year anyway, because, um. You know, what weekend are we deciding we are gonna do this? So.
You could also say in your ordinance that it, that there will be, um, four days, four days, five days, whatever you want, set by resolution every May. So that it doesn't change to, again, with a different council, it doesn't change to ten days.
I like the seven days that we have now.
My concern is confusing people. You know, if everything's always changing, you don't know what it is.
I, I think that's fair, but I, I think, given the nature of this activity and the, um, resources people have. I, I think most people are going to go to the city website. That's gonna be on the front page and it's gonna say fireworks this year can be shot off these days. I.
My assumption is if I can buy them, that would be my assumption.
And, and what we understood was Story County, right? Can you shoot them the entire month of July? Or what was that?
I don't know. Aimea doesn't allow it.
Now, Story County itself, so.
That is part.
So exactly just across the street in our city limits, they can shoot them all month long and, and nobody knows where it is, right? So I think when we were visiting this, the last time where we limited it to those days or allowed it those. Days, we looked at Story County across, like, we couldn't tell where it came from and. Yeah, so I think we were more restrictive than the county. Um, with, with our ordinance and I've heard more pros from the people that I've talked to of. Staying where we're at, but they don't, they're not following it to the level of saying, hey, are you changing that yes or no? They're like, we like what we have, right? Probably.
I've noticed that there's a lot more before than after. So maybe it's, whatever you guys want to do, just feel free if you have any questions, I mean, otherwise I'm gonna take my seat again.
Thanks, chief.
No.
Um, I, I do think there, uh, there's certainly pros and cons to kind of revisiting each year. I, I can fully appreciate that. Uh, the, the pro at this point would be, there's still a bit of a learning curve here. We're still trying to find that sweet spot. Uh, you're never gonna satisfy everybody, those that are very much in favor and those that would rather not see fireworks. You're not gonna please everybody. But, um, you know, if we did address this on an annual basis, uh, we could continue to tweak this and, and maybe find what, what does work. Uh, so I do see some wisdom in that, um, following that model. Um, I certainly understanding maybe not everybody's in favor of that, but i- is, is there a? Consensus amongst, uh, few council members to go that direction or do you wish to remain? What we are, but modify, uh, to, to conform to state code?
I picked the latter. Modify the state code, keep as we are.
I, I liked your suggestion as far as, I mean, it's kind of what we were just talking about with parking as far as learning and being able to tweak it along the way, um.
Mr. Mulder?
You need to ask.
I think here what we currently have plus the state, the additional state time hours. Okay. Mr. Murphy?
I would say before I'd be up to changing things. I, I'd wanna know what language we're looking at and then have an opportunity to go visit with people. Because again, I appreciate people coming and talking, but when you only got a handful of people talking and you got five thousand people in town. You, you really don't get a good view of what people are thinking. And if people aren't aware to what's going on, you're not gonna get that view. So if we do decide to change, I just ask that we leave some time there to go out and talk to constituents before we make it. I just don't wanna make it and then go figure out what's going on.
Um, with all due respect, Councilmember Murphy, we're kind of up against a time constraint because this law goes into effect July first and we have two council meetings before then. So.
Well, at this point, I, I think that the only thing we can do is comply with the law. I wouldn't rush out and change everything drastically other than to comply at this point until we. Can get that information. I don't think in two weeks or whatever, two meetings that we got that we're gonna, we're gonna figure out the golden egg to everything. So I, I would suggest right now we just conform with the law and, and I'm not saying to be done with it. I, I don't mind having the conversation. I just don't know we're gonna get it done before July.
Okay. Having heard comments from the majority of the council members, if you could please, if staff could please draft a revision to our ordinance. To reflect inclusion of the new hours as mandated by the state, uh, and bring that back at a, uh, upcoming council meeting. Yes, uh, uh, all, yes, yep. Well, it's the thirty first and the first technically.
Yes.
Because it goes till, off thirty AM, so that's the first, so. Of December, January, yep. Okay. Uh, moving along, I doubt there's anybody from public that wishes to speak on the water treatment plant, but I'll ask the question. Seeing no one rise, uh, water treatment plant is our next item. Forrest?
So we're getting very close to wrapping up the water treatment plant. Um, uh, I talked to Jake and we're down to about six cleanup items still remaining. So, uh, should be, I would think by sometime in June, we would be done. And so anticipation of that, I'm looking for some direction from city council on liquidated damages. So the original contract, uh, we had two completion dates in the original contract for the water plant. We had a completion date for substantial completion, meaning use of the water plant, being able to make water and use of the equipment. Of August first, twenty twenty three. And then we had a final completion, meaning everything done, including. The grass and everything else, um, done six months later and that was, uh, June third of twenty twenty four. Uh, um, twenty about, about, I mean, went from August first to June third, so that's a little more than six months. Yeah. June twenty twenty four, uh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's where I screwed up. August first, twenty twenty three. Uh, was substantial. January eighteenth of twenty twenty four was final. So there's my six months roughly. Um. The substantial completion, instead of being August first to twenty twenty three, it ended up being, uh, ten months later on June third of twenty twenty four. For substantial completion. We're still not all the way done. We still have those six items left, but. If we call it May thirtieth and we're gonna, when I wrote this letter, I had May thirtieth, but it's probably gonna be first part of June before we're actually done. Uh, so instead of January eighteenth of twenty twenty four, we're now May thirtieth of twenty twenty five or first part of June, so seventeen months later. Contractually, we had in there that if they are late, that the city can assess five hundred dollars per calendar day. That they are late for the substantial completion date. So that's the most, you know, getting everything operational. So that's the, we're ten months times five hundred hours a day. And the final completion, we could, that's seventeen months, three hundred dollars per. Calendar day and they can be concurrently. They're not, they can be going out at the same time. So I put together kind of a table, uh, in your packets in the letter. Contractually, you can, you could assess three hundred thousand dollars of liquidated damages for them being late with the substantial completion. And the final completion. At the same time, you know, contractually you can allow that, but same time you can't punish the contractor for being late, you know, you. You know, they're way past their date. We don't like the work. They, you know, whatever our reasons are, we can't punish them. We need to have it. Somewhat correlate to, um, actual damages. Now, liquidated damages are put together. So that you don't have to come up with an exact number. It's a contractual number ahead of time. What the courts have said is that. Even though contractually you could charge three hundred thousand, what the courts have typically said is. You know, once you had substantial completion, you're, you're using the water plant, that's really the cutoff. It's not the grass is growing or not. So I, I looked at that as a third one and that would be closer to a hundred and fifty three thousand, so about half that. So I think legally you could go up to a hundred and fifty three thousand and the courts would, uh, be in agreement with that. However, you need to still have something that's close to that. And so, um. Still need, still working on what this looks like. It can be things like additional interest costs. It can be, uh, additional engineering costs, which I'll talk about in a minute. Uh, it can be additional staff time. So, you know, if Keith or Jake or Jeff, you know, have additional staff time out there and they're working overtime and. Not able to get to some things or we had to, they had to hire something done because they couldn't get to it. All those can add to that. Um, so we want to get something close. Um, if you, you know, if we can own, if we could do a hundred and fifty. Because that was substantial, but we can verify that, you know, we're actually some number less than that. Then we go to the contractor and say, you know, we could have done three hundred. We could have done one fifty. But here's our closer to our actual and here's what we're going to assess. And I'm bringing this up now because we're getting close. And the contractor has asked for release of retainage. They've, they've gotten, uh, waivers from their subs and their suppliers. So they're asking for release of their retainage minus the cleanup items. And we don't want to prove that if the council is wanting to assess some damages for, for costs. So, um, that's why, uh, Dave said, suggested we have this in a work session, just kind of see where council's at with that. Uh, on the engineering side with engineering costs. Um, Beanstrang Kim is about out about a hundred and I checked, we're about a hundred and seven thousand over our own costs. On what we originally had in the agreement. However, that's not all the city part of it. Uh, we looked at, uh, you know, how much of this is been passed the completion date? And to Keith and Jake's credit, they said, you know what? The cleanup stuff, we don't need you out here anymore. So we've not been charging the city or, or putting times toward accruing any time for quite a while now towards this project. Because Jake and Keith took over that, uh, which I really appreciate them doing that. Um, um, but we did have about fifty thousand dollars of time since. Um, but we did have about fifty thousand dollars of time since the completion date. We had a contractual in there of a uh, eighteen months for resident review. We overran that eighteen months by a few more months in our contract. So that's another twenty-five thousand to that on top of the fifty, so seventy-five. So that's kind of where we're at with engineering. Um, you know, if the council says Beanstrang Kim, go pound sand, then yeah, okay, we'll go pound sand. Uh, but we'd be asking for that. Um, you know, if you say no, you know, we don't, we don't want to charge them liquidated damages and V and K, that's ours to eat. So I'm throwing myself on the mercy of the council a little bit here. Um, but that's kind of where we're at and not looking for necessarily a number. Just kind of a sense of direction from the council on what you're thinking.
Sure, uh, two questions. You've talked about some numbers. What was the total contract for this project? Was it ten million or five million? What was the total ballpark-ish?
It's co- uh, ten, approaching probably ten eight, ten nine, I think.
Put it on the scale, what a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, that's right. Yeah. Yeah, so that's a very good point there that, you know, yeah, we're talking a substantial project here, eleven million dollars. It's so, that makes a difference.
Yep, uh, and then my second question, you've indicated kind of some engineering cost. Um, do you have a feel for the city's hard costs associated with that? Or have you done any paperwork on that for uh, Keith's time or Jeff?
I, I have not done any, I have not. That's, that's something I'd be looking for some input um, from, from you what?
I know there was a time during that switch over, we lost a pump and it was a whole scramble thing. There were some hard costs that were accrued for sure during that, so maybe that doesn't add up to a match, but, but there are, there are dollars for sure, so.
Yes.
Is, is this project got kicked off, was there any delays due to the supply chain stuff um, relating to COVID in twenty twenty? Was there lingering effects to some of the supply chain on this as well?
There was with the, some of the electro equipment and the generator. Um, but not, I mean, we're talking a couple of months, you know, few months kind of thing, not a year and a half.
Right, but some consideration or argument could be made for the completion date. You know, might have been adjusted or affected by the supply chain impacts due to COVID.
That's, that's, yes, that is correct.
It, yeah, it's a fair point, Mr. Mulder. I think uh, in order for me to uh, listen to that argument, I would need to see that that electrical equipment was ordered on day one, not six months down the road. Like it should have been identified as the longest lead time item, that there was no secret at that point that that was a long lead time item. So if they can show, hey, we ordered this on day, yeah, we got shop drawings to engineer on, on day one for their approval and, you know.
Question is, does it impact the schedule?
Yep, fair enough, for sure.
Thought I remembered that, that's why I asked the question. Uh, I thought there were some, some electrical components or something that really had a schedule impact that they were trying to order right away.
I appreciate the engineering information. Um, for me to make a rational decision, I'd like to know more about hard costs. I mean, what else, what else did we incur that we wouldn't have because the completion date was late, so.
Right, and so the direction from council would say, okay, the engineering plus whatever the city's costs were, you know, add all that together. And then that would be, that would be the number, I mean.
Yeah, I think if, if we could see what all that is, then we could maybe have a conversation about it. But not knowing if we're talking five thousand dollars worth of costs with the city or fifty thousand dollars worth of costs, I mean, that's a.
No, it's going to be more the lower number.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to know total, total costs that we actually had, because i- if we incurred costs because they delayed or whatever the case being, then I, I think that's fair game. I'm not advocating that we go try to make a whirlwind off of this thing because we can. But I want to make sure that what we have lost is covered.
Yeah, and, and this will be part of a discussion. I'm just looking for the starting point. Is, is really all I'm looking for.
So a lot of times.
Come back.
A lot of times when I've analyzed this in the past, I've always looked at the people who are closest to the project to see if they felt like the contractor was making progression daily towards the end goal. Or were they delaying and not showing up and not being on the job and like really cause that delay? If they were there making effort every single day and showing up and doing things, that I always felt just a little bit more going towards a linear, more lenient. But if they were absent for weeks at a time, then like, you know what, you're getting the whole cost, right? That's, how do you feel the contractor was in this scenario?
Uh, they were absent quite a bit, I will say, um, but uh, we, I mean, we went through a whole winter out there where it seemed like somebody didn't show up to do anything, so. Uh, it would have been probably twenty-three. And I mean, the ROs kids weren't even delivered till twenty-four. So I'd like to see the delivery date on that for sure, but for the order name. None of that, but it did take a lot of time just throughout our regular days, you know, this project went on a year longer than it should have. So um, Keith and I were dealing with that when we should have been out starting other projects. So that is some aspect I'd like to add to that, but.
Do you think you'll be able to, you and staff will be able to go back and reconcile what those hard costs, those opportunity losses?
You have record of all our, like anytime we got called into an issue with that new plant. Um, and that's like forty hours of time, but that's not taking into account anything that happened during the day while we were there, things like that too. So that, that would be hard to do, but I could come up with something, I just.
Yeah, fair enough. Is there, I guess I'm looking to counsel here, uh, Ms. Roberts as well. Uh, i- if you're giving me direction that no, we're not going to pursue liquidated damages, that would be good information. Um, otherwise, I guess I'd be looking for direction to have staff prefer, prepare uh, kind of a cost estimate, a, a total cost. Um, so which direction do you prefer to go there, Rory?
I, I think we should go after the damages and not only the damages that we can show, but we have a contract here. So we need to go after something on the contractual also. And then Forrest should be able to give us, cause you, you, like you said, you know, we're, we're looking at the contract. We could go after three hundred thousand, but more, more feasible would probably be a hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah, so I, I would count on Forrest to give us the information, but also the information from Jake and Pete or Jeff, I'm sorry, that uh, has the established information. But yeah, I, I definitely think we need to go after some damages.
Appreciate that. Mr. Wrigler?
Yeah, I'm, I'm aligned with Rory. It's not, not fighting tooth and nail for that three hundred odd number. But all the damages we incurred plus what a reason you, I can't remember the language you used, but you said there's some reasonable expectation.
So, so maybe we start at the one fifty and then if the contractor wants to argue down, we've got room to come down.
Fair enough, Mr. Mulder.
Yeah, I, I, like I mentioned, I've done this before a few times and um, you know, I always look at the real costs. I, I feel like we should try and do our best to cover those real liquidated damage. I always still take into consideration any of the impacts that could be because of things outside of contractors' control. If there was realistically a couple of months delays due to supply chain issues. Um, but I, I hear you also, if they were gone absent weeks at a time, was it because of the supply? Was it be, maybe not, if you were saying it was winter of twenty-three, um, that might have been beyond that, right? So um.
So maybe it's a hundred and fifty, but back that off a little bit if there's some things that were out of their control.
That's, that's where I would land. I always tried to find that low end balance, but also cover the hard costs um, and expenses of the owner. Yeah, I'd agree with what's said, but I'd also taken consideration opportunity costs. So is there things that we lost out on because couldn't do? Because we were tied up doing this, cause that, that's still a cost to us, whether or not it's, you know, something you can physically say, but if we're delayed on another project, it's costing us more money because we're delayed. Then I, I think that's an opportunity cost also.
So we're looking at a contract though also. I mean, I, I agree totally what you say, Greg. But I mean, we're looking at a contract that was over eighteen months over.
Yeah.
So, I mean, so there, there's definitely, I mean, yeah, we, we definitely need to recuperate.
But when we're talking costs, I'd like to document them opportunity costs. They're costs that most people don't think about.
Yeah.
Ms. Roberts, the question was, uh, we can certainly forego any liquidated damages or we can try to recover those, looking for a preference.
I'm actually leaning to what Greg was talking about doing. Um, I don't know about the opportunity cost. I feel like that's punitive, but maybe it's just the way I think. Um, I don't want to put, you guys don't think I'm soft. I don't want to put anybody out of business, right? But just because the grass wasn't there, like there's no charges for that.
Right.
So it just actually didn't cost us anything.
That's, that's fair enough. Uh, I guess my own comments that I'll add. I, I think it is certainly appropriate. I, I appreciate Forrest uh, offering up that, hey, if, if V and K is unable to recover it, they're out. Uh, and I appreciate that. However, if, if this was a staff engineer, the council would absolutely be going after those dollars. Uh, V and K is our city engineer. They're a partner with us. Uh, I think we should do everything we can to try to recover those costs. So uh, with that, I think I've got some direction from council to put together some costs, uh, cost estimate, so to speak, and work from there.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, council. Appreciate the input.
Thank you. All right, the last item on the work session this evening is regarding a development agreement. David, you want to kick this one off?
I sure will. And just looking at kind of what we did with uh, Chris Gardner, going back on the plaza, there was the intent. It should be one and two, so we're kind of looking at that. Um, with the annexation that's taking place out at five sixtieth and First Street. Uh, we still have about seventy-five acres of the quick property and there's two other parcels. As we looked at um, the property to the south of what um, Huxley Heights is, is annexing in, uh, the county was real quick to point out that we're going to create an island. Um, so I caught Steve Quick kind of in a moment when he was walking out of an exercise class and I say, hey, what would you think about, you know, annexing, you know, the, the rest of your property? Uh, it's something that we've looked long term, we're trying to square our boundaries up. That quick moment in time, Steve didn't really didn't think there was anything, you know, wrong with doing that. He says, it, I don't see why we wouldn't do it. Uh, but I got a phone call about two hours later and it was his wife. And she was still a little burned off the development agreement that uh, had been worked on. They basically felt that it had been approved, but Rita kept pulling it off and off and then Rita was gone and it didn't get approved. Um, so the mayor and I met with Steve and Ann for about an hour and a half, uh, one night after work, talked about it. Um, it just kept coming back to this development agreement. Um, so I said, you know, if there was a way that this could be done, so that I, you know, there's like three, three things that have to happen. First, we have to make sure there was a frozen base that's set, that was set prior to your homes being built. Otherwise, there's really no new increment. Secondly, then if, if the frozen base was set, then I've got to get with my bond council to see if we can do this. And then third, it comes down to, is the council willing to go, go back to that development agreement on platform? Uh, the frozen base has been set when that was originally plotted. Um, all of the homes are built, talked with um, Jamie Bjork. She said, the city, if they choose, they could uh, create a development agreement that would honor that original price. We kind of talked that, you know, I think if we do this, it's, it has, it's kind of contingent upon getting a voluntary annexation of their property in, which would definitely give us an eighty-twenty um, on the other two properties, even though I will talk to the other two properties and ask them to voluntarily annex it, and if so, it would give them the same sort of deal that Rick, that uh, Rick Sheldon got. I think when the, he came in on the one twenty, the city granted no um, city taxes for about ten years. Um, in hopes that we could get it all voluntary. Either way, it has to go to the city development board, uh, because it's within the two mile limit. Um, Greg Picklop from the uh, alliance has worked with uh, Cambridge. Um, talked to them about this particular project and then the other project that we've been working on, south of two-ten. Uh, Cambridge has been very supportive. They won't stand in the way of those annexations. So um, if we do an eighty-twenty, um, it kind of adds an additional forty-five plus days on the city development board side. If it's purely voluntarily, things go a little quicker, both for us and through city development. But just wanted to see what council's appetite would be to maybe go back to uh, the quicks with the offer of, you know, pu- putting this development agreement out for consideration. It was originally set for five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, the total cost of the improvements were over, it was a million fifty-nine thousand four thirty-three. Uh, there were some numbers, I think it was roughly forty, if I'm researching right, about forty-seven percent was going to go to LMI. The remainder would go to quicks, would be paid out over eleven years. Looking back, you know, if you built five houses a year, if you started the clock with the first house is hit, don't know what he would have got, but all the houses are there. I don't think it's going to take eleven years to pay back. But I just wanted to kind of throw that out, get uh, your thoughts on whether or not it's something you would be uh, interested in taking a look at, not.
If we went this direction, is this opening a Pandora's box to other developers? Do we have, what else do we have out here? I mean, it seems like, I, I enjoy coming to council meetings, cause I don't know what the hell's ever coming up. We, we got more things that have happened that has been underneath the table or just, it should have been this way and, and is this way. And there's no document there. We put it on a Hardy's napkin and put it in a glove box somewhere. Uh, do we have other things that we need to be worried about?
Not that I'm aware of, John, but this is a, this is an agreement that had been put together. Um, it had been circled through council. My understanding, at least what the mayor and I heard for the quicks were, that Rita kept telling them that she was working on it, working on it, working on it. Uh, Rita was gone, it came back and there was a change in council and it got voted down. So.
Yeah, I, when I first decided to run for council and was talking to people, that actually got brought up as a discussion point for one that threw the changeover in our city government. That was kind of fumbled and that people thought wasn't handled correctly. And I'm not speaking about the council that voted through or the previous people who were here. But I know that there were people who didn't feel like that was handled right. So I, I'd love to have an opportunity to look at it and see if we can't make sense of it.
So I'm feeling like I know I supported it. I normally do, but I don't, this doesn't feel right to me. Like coming back after the fact, after it got voted down and now it's like, hey, we'll annex you in for five hundred thousand dollars. And then what happens to the next people? We want to voluntarily annex in. Well, we want five hundred dozen. It just doesn't feel right to me.
So I was one of the people that voted no on this and give you a little history on it, uh, like what Dave talked about the numbers. Originally Steve come in with the, the five hundred and sixty thousand TIF on, on it. Um, I was originally no. Um, after talking to um, and going over the stuff, um, I was kind of leaning toward I was going to vote yes. Prior to that, Steve came into a meeting, the meeting before the vote and says, quote, unquote, I am going to be greedy on this. I'm going to ask for the full one million that Dave was talking about. The actual cost. And at that point, um, Steve had been receiving TIF from two thousand and three, when we originally started tipping. Um, and he had received on every one of his developments, TIF. Um, and reason why I voted no was, some of the questions I asked Steve was, one, did you make profit without getting TIF? Yes. Would you have done these developments without TIF? Yes. So basically, when he said to me, I'm being greedy, I'm going to ask for the full million, my vote went from maybe on the five sixty to no, period. Um, and I believe, um, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to go back through the deal, but it was Nico uh, voted no. And then Kevin Thompson voted no, and I think you and Tracy voted yes. voted no, and then Kevin Thompson voted no, and I think you and Tracy voted yes. So that was the deal. So I I'm with Tracy on this at at this point. To me, it feels like an extortion. I I I I will not vote, and that's just my opinion. But I wa- I I I won't vote for it, and but we, I I'm all favor of listening to it, but that's that's I that's just the way I feel on it. But yeah, we can, I I have all, I mean, Steve can come out and talk about it and we can, we can discuss it, but, um, that's how I feel right now. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for the information, because without it, you're just sort of sitting there going, okay.
I I think we all should go back on the minutes on it, you know, I mean, don't don't go by what I'm saying here, but you know, we we have minutes on when that happens.
It was, it was a tough decision. Supported, I always have, like, I think that helps the figure. The TIF's a good thing, but I just don't like the way this one's coming back around.
Yeah, I can understand that too. I I fully understand what you're coming up, Tracy, and I I can respect that. It it does look like almost a bribery aspect.
And and I've thought about this a lot since Dave and I talked about it. If if Steve would come back and say, okay, we'll annex our property voluntarily, and then I want to bring up this issue. You know, bring it to to the table afterwards. Um, I would, I would feel a lot better about that, but when you, when you say, well, we're not going to talk about annexing voluntarily until we talk about getting this done. I mean, uh, to me, I mean, if it's, if it's done different, I could see it maybe differently, but I I just can't, uh, I just can't see it different. Like, I'm unlike you. It's like, it it just doesn't, it doesn't feel right.
Would we have to go south then?
That's what I want to know. So with the other two properties came in voluntarily, then this this one never gets to that?
No, you've got, um, you've got the forty-seven plus acres, um, the D R Horton is looking. Steve has approximately seventy-five acres. Then you've got Kaufmans that have a little over, a little under nineteen acres is eighteen plus, and then can't remember the folks with the blue house, Lance, they've got about nine, about nine acres, so.
I can tell you, uh, both of those are friends of mine, and I can tell you from past discussions with them.
Oh, I'm sure they do.
They they will not go voluntarily. Um, they might go with what Dave's offering, but, um, yeah. So, yeah.
And I'm not opposed to offering Stephen Anne something like similar that we did to Sheldon's, right? I mean, like, I think we have to be consistent.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I'd like to see consistency. I think that sends a bad message to whatever it costs.
If i- if I could clarify, just so, uh, maybe make sure everybody else understands this. In order for the, I'll call it the D R development to happen, we don't have to take, we don't need quicks property for that to happen. So there's.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, that's not, he doesn't hold all the cards in this. It certainly cleans up, there's cleans up borders, it brings area into your town. There's a lot of benefits to the city for having quicks, but it doesn't hold up the D R, if that's your question.
Let me, let me ask you this.
Yeah, well, and and ultimately, I'm sorry, ultimately, that land, quicks land is very valuable. It will get developed. And then it will come into the city. It won't remain in the county. You can't develop it in the county, so whether that's five years from now or thirty years from now, I don't know, but someday it will.
So so one other thought, I I mean, I've been thinking about this a lot because it 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 does have a lot to do with the growth of our community. But what would Steve say if, because I know we're going to incorporate, uh, Kaufmans and Lance's, uh, property also, those two properties, uh, and then, so why aren't we annexing Steve Quick's property and all that property that is on the?
North side?
Yes.
I'd agree with that.
So.
Take it on up.
I I I I guarantee you, we'll not voluntarily go on that.
Well, we'd have to serve all those folks with sanitary sewer.
Yes.
On the north side of the public, and I don't know if you can do that.
Well, we're we're going to take our sanitary sewer all the way out to the development, correct?
Yeah, but he only has to pitch it enough to serve his development. He doesn't have to pitch it.
Well, I don't know, that, if we, if we, if we pitch that, do you think that, uh, he's going to voluntarily come into the community?
I just looked at it from the, from the eighty-twenty standpoint, is that when you, if you take quick seventy-five acres and the D R Horton, and then you look at the other two properties, they have eighteen percent. If it's over twenty percent, you can't do an eighty-twenty. That's why going to the north, unless you've got a whole bunch of people voluntarily coming in, it's not going to work, um. I mean, the eighty-twenty, it has to be less than twenty percent. So if quicks, if we just take D R Hortons at this point, I don't know that you'll you won't have enough to do an eighty-twenty with those other three properties going forward. That that's the only reason that I was pitching this. Because there has been some talk about wanting to square off our boundaries and complete some annexations and get some things done, so that wasn't anything that, they just talked about being upset about it. I'm I'm the one that threw the pitch out that, you know, what if this could be done? So if you want to blame somebody for that, you can blame me because I'm the one that brought it up. But I was looking at the eighty-twenty, you know, trying to get to where we could get a big chunk of ground in into the city, square up that boundary, because we've I mean, if if you look out there, we, Steve's got about thirty acres on the east side of, um, where he's currently has houses are built, which is kind of set for Platts, five and six for sure. Um, you've got Sand Cherry. When you get out to the other side of D R Horton, we've got, on the other side of five sixtieth, we go clear over to the water plant and the wastewater plant, and then Cambridge is right up to there. Um, we've got some going down five sixtieth. We certainly don't have it all, but we're getting a little bit more and more of it, so. Just trying to clean up some boundaries.
Yeah, and I I think at this time, as I said earlier, I think we need to who exactly it is when I say we, but I think we need to knock on some of these doors and talk with people just to start the conversation. What we're want, we're wanting to do something. What's your view on this? What's your concerns? Hear people out, and and we might be surprised that people's attitudes, if you actually have a conversation and ask questions, it goes a long way to communicate from people versus dictate.
No, I think those are, that's a fair comment. Um, I I think that's probably part of the reason we're here. It was knocking on Mr. Quick's door and having that conversation, so to speak. Um, that's why we're here this evening, having having this conversation, so. So it was a good conversation. I don't know if I have a definitive direction for staff at this point. Um, was it to research, was there some research you were looking for? Was it a hard no, or was, what was the direction here?
I would be for, if if we didn't have the stipulation, I, you know, I, I'm sorry, Dave, if you, yeah, but anyway, I would be if if we didn't have the stipulation that we're going to give that five hundred and sixty prior to, I mean, that could come up later. Uh, and I I I'm totally, I'll be open minded to it. Like, like I said, my decision, you know, I I gave you a reason for my decision on that vote, um. And I would be just willing to look at it.
I'd prefer not to backpedal because then you got to other developers coming in for their other twenty-five percent, whatever that was. I just think it opens up a backdoor. You're right.
I'd be willing to have a conversation, Owen. Negotiate, look at Steve, what kind of ideas we can come up with. But you know, maybe the five hundred thousand's not a solution, but maybe we come up with something in between.
I wasn't around over that twelve month agreement, so thanks for that history, but I'm open to listening and seeing and just wondering where we're at. I I do understand where you're at, Rory, and where you're going.
Valuable history to understand.
Yeah, I I'm open to discussing, and I guess maybe it's, you you shared some of that, which helped inform me and and maybe what I heard, or, you know, you hear stuff through the grapevine, you got to take it with a grain of salt, but, um. I guess I'd like clarification on what the notes were prior, because the way I had understood it is there was an agreement that was more or less in place, and then the vote kind of flipped on it, and what you shared might inform why it flipped, or why people, or why it was swayed one direction or another, but um, I don't have the full notes or history of it. I just, you know, the hearsay, ten years removed or whatever, so.
So you have your three, so you're gonna get direction. I'm just pushing. It's eight fifteen. I'm hangry.
I hear you. That was, that was the final word on that, David.
Can certainly invite the quicks maybe to come to the next meeting and just discuss the option of annexing, and then if that goes through, the council's willing to maybe at least look at something going forward on a development agreement.
Sounds great. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. That was Ms. Roberts, I heard.
Yeah, second.
Second, Mr. Mulder, all those in favor, please run that.
I.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
So that's, so do you have anything to say?